Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, November 19th, 2024. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviaak.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rauer.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. All right, why don't we start by adopting this evening's agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda, Mr. Mayor. Second?
Motion by Carlson and a second by Novak. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And the very first thing we have is we should have some special guests here from the Coon Rapids Women of Today. We've set aside November 19th to recognize the many activities of the dedicated women of today across the state. Are you our folks from Women of Today back there? Nice. That's right, you're the one. Okay, all right. Can you please come up? And I'll meet you in front of the dais here. I don't need the agenda, I need the proclamation. Hi. Right up here in the center and kind of put your back to the dais. There we go. Welcome. First I'll read this and then you can introduce yourself and talk about what's going on. Give you a couple of minutes to prepare. All right, well, I have a proclamation for the Coon Rapids Women of Today Day. Whereas the Coon Rapids Women of Today charted as part of the Women of Today and United States Women of Today Chapter, February 29th, 2016, and whereas, Women of Today believe that through us great lessons can be learned, worthy deeds performed, and a hand of fellowship extended to millions of women everywhere, and whereas, the Minnesota Women of Today and the Coon Rapids Women of Today are dedicated to actively promoting such public awareness and service programs such as Alexandra House, Hope for Youth, ACBC Food Health, and Feed My Starving Children, as well as participating in Snowflake Days, and whereas, the Minnesota Women of Today and the Coon Rapids Women of Today provide personal enrichment and leadership training for members of all ages and demographics through our belief in the advancement through equity and inclusion, and now therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the Coon Rapids City Council hereby proclaim November 19th, 2024 to be Coon Rapids Women of Today Day in the City of Coon Rapids, proclaimed this 19th day of November, 2024. Well, there's only a little bit of time left in your day now. Yeah. Why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself?
Sure. Virginia Hopperman.
Lori Mush.
Jenny Orr.
And if either any one of you wants to talk about what you've got going, or if you want to invite anybody to join you, or you know, now's your time.
Well, we have our meetings, the first Monday of every month unless it's a holiday, so, and we've been trying something new this year. We are having guest speakers come. So we just had Haven for Heroes, and then this upcoming month we're having somebody from...
We're having somebody from Elk River. Thumbs up. A thumbs up, they do a lot for suicide prevention and mental health.
Okay, very good. All right. And it's open to women from all around the community or the area?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
All right. Well, there is your proclamation, and I thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you. The second item on our agenda is another proclamation, and this is to recognize Small Business Saturday. Whereas, the government of Coon Rapids, Minnesota celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 33.2 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 62.7% of net new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ 46.4% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas, 68 cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the United States stays in the local community, and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas, 72% of consumers reported that Small Business Saturday 2023 made them want to shop and dine at small, independently owned retailers and restaurants all year long. And whereas, Coon Rapids, Minnesota supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the City Council and citizens of our city officially proclaim November 30th, 2024 as Small Business Saturday in the City of Coon Rapids, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Proclaimed this 19th day of November, 2024. All right. A worthy day indeed. All right, we are up to approving the minutes from the November 6th City Council Meeting.
Motion to approve minutes of November 6th.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Ray Rauer. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and those minutes are approved. Now we're looking to approve the minutes from the November 12th Special City Council Meeting.
Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviaak.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 12th, 2024 Special City Council Meeting.
Second.
Motion by Grisgoviaak and a second by Novak. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. We have two items on our consent agenda this evening. The first one is to adopt Resolution 24-101 requesting Anoka County Highway Department to perform a speed study on 85th Avenue. Anoka County recently completed construction of a roundabout at the intersection of 85th Avenue and Evergreen Boulevard, County Road 132. It currently has a posted speed of 50 miles an hour from a point west of Springbrook Drive to County State Aid Highway 1, which is East River Road. Construction of the roundabout will require speeds slower than currently posted to safely approach and navigate through this intersection. The distances between the roundabout and Springbrook Drive and the existing railroad crossing are limited and may not be conducive to acceleration and deceleration to match the current posted speeds. The cities of Coon Rapids and Fridley share a common boundary along portions of 85th Avenue and are collectively requesting the county to analyze the speed along this corridor with a desire of arriving at a uniform speed that maximizes safety. So we're looking to approve the resolution for a speed study on 85th Avenue, County Road 132, between East River Road and Springbrook Drive. And the next and final item on our consent agenda is to receive the schedule of electronic payments. And what we have here is we have a list of electronic payments processed since the last council meeting, so we're looking to receive the schedule of electronic payments from October 31st, 2024 to November 13th, 2024. And that's our complete consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray Rauer.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rauer and a second by, was it Carlson down there? Counselman Carlson. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And now we are looking to conduct a public hearing for Metropolitan Council Environmental Services Coon Rapids Interceptor Rehabilitation Facility Plan. And Mr. Hanson, do you want to introduce this? And I assume we'll do the public hearing after the presentation.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight with us, we have representatives of the Metropolitan Council Environmental Services, or also known as the MCES, as well as their engineering consultant team, FOTH Infrastructure. They're here tonight to provide a presentation about their planned interceptor rehabilitation project. They will walk us through a number of slides that will detail their project and be available to answer any questions. So with that, I will turn it over to representatives of the MCES and FOTH.
All right. Come right up to the dais here and introduce yourself. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. I'm Peter Lindstrom, and I have the pleasure of serving on the Met Council for District 10, which is Blaine on the way south through northern Ramsey County down to Roseville and Falcon Heights area. I had the pleasure and honor of serving on my city council as mayor in two terms on the council in Falcon Heights, home of the State Fair, and you are welcome to park in my driveway for free anytime, just for council members. But anyways, that's neither here nor there. So also wanted to say, if you ever get an invitation in your inboxes to tour one of our wastewater treatment plants, please take it up. The wastewater from Coon Rapids travels all the way to our metro plant, which you're going to hear about in a minute, but it is amazing. It is a fascinating and amazing tour. The metro plant is just south of downtown St. Paul, so that's quite a journey. And it's a lot of infrastructure along the way that we need to take care of, and that's what we're talking about tonight. So anyways, Peter Lindstrom is my name, and we've got the A-Team with us today, including Prataksha Bandhiri, and we have Tim Wadine, Dan Shunard, and then from our engineering team, we have Rachel Krantz and Lexi Duvey, and Jackie Nierbas as well. There's Jackie. So if it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, today I will call the public hearing to order. And if I could advance this, there we go. So the subject of the public hearing is the Environmental Services Coon Rapids Sewer Interceptor Rehabilitation Draft Facilities Plan. That's a mouthful, but it's super important to our community here. This plan outlines our recommendations for the Coon Rapids Sewer Rehabilitation Project. And the reason, the purpose for today's hearing is just to summarize the project, go through some of the alternatives that we evaluated, and of course, get our questions answered. I'll just go over for a minute how folks can submit comments or questions throughout the upcoming presentation, and we'll address them during the comment portion of the hearing. When you do, if you have any questions, please include your name, address, and the organization you represent, if any. And of course, we know this is being recorded, and we're going to be posting the recording on our Met Council website, which we do have a specific project website for this project, and that's where you'll find the recording. As we conduct this public hearing, there's a few things that I'd like to point out. Anyone, of course, is welcome to provide comments, and please sign in. I think we have a sign-in sheet at the back of the room there, and then we can call upon folks from that sheet. We ask that you state, again, state and spell your full name each time you speak, and we also welcome written comments. And so with that, I'll welcome Prataksha. Welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Feel free to introduce yourself as you come up, so we know who you are.
Sure. My name is Prataksha Bandhiri. I work at the Environmental Services Division of the Metropolitan Council. I will provide a brief overview of the Metropolitan Council, our regional wastewater system and service area and facilities. After that, our project team will provide an update about the planned improvements to the sewer facilities in Coon Rapids. The Metropolitan Council is a regional policymaking body and planning agency. We provide essential services in the seven-county Twin Cities metro area. The regional wastewater system is run by our Environmental Services and Operating Division of the Met Council. This is a map of the seven-county Twin Cities metropolitan area. It is showing our wastewater service area and regional sanitary sewer facilities. The color shading on the map shows the areas we serve, basically the urban and suburban portions of the metro area. Each of the color shaded area corresponds to one of our regional wastewater treatment plants, as you can see there. Our wastewater collection system consists of approximately 640 miles of regional sanitary sewers, also called interceptor sewers, 61 pump stations, and over 200 meter stations. These sewers intercept the flow of wastewater from 110 cities and townships in the metro area and carry it to our nine treatment plants. In addition, our communities operate more than 5,000 miles of local sanitary sewer pipes. The icons on the map indicate our nine wastewater treatment plants. They treat approximately 250 million gallons of wastewater each day and discharge the clean water to the Mississippi, Minnesota, and Central Rivers. To put this into perspective, 250 million gallons would easily fill the Empire State Building each day. We're often asked how the Met Council finances the regional wastewater system. The answer to that is we build the communities connected to the system to pay for our operation, maintenance, and capital improvement costs. The cities, in turn, bill these costs and their local costs to property owners connected to their local sewer systems. About 60% of your sewer bill pays regional system costs, and about 40% stays in your community to pay for your local sewer system costs. The user fees that we collect are enough to fund our regional wastewater system without the need for tax dollars. We also do not levy special assessments on properties near sewer projects like we are discussing tonight. The projects have a broader public benefit, and so their costs are paid for reason wide. We're going to the facility plan now. I'll provide a brief definition, and then we'll start. A facility plan is a prerequisite for a portion of the financing on environmental services projects. It summarizes the current state of the existing wastewater sewer system. It identifies the need for improving existing facilities. It determines the potential environmental impacts of the improved facilities, and recommends a course of action. We'll learn more about the plan now.
Good evening, Council. I'm Rachel Krantz. I represent FOTH. We have been hired by the Metropolitan Council Environmental Services to assist in the completion of the facility plan. So while Councilmember Lindstrom and Prataksha got to share with you a little bit about MCES as a whole, I get to talk to you about this facility plan, about where, how, and why. So in this facility plan, we are evaluating three different sites within the city of Coon Rapids, and they've been broken down into phases two and three. Phase three has two different sites. This is similar to work that you have already seen completed within the city in the 2023 into 2024 construction. That was phase one, and that was from the north side of Highway 10 near Exion, south all the way down to Met Council's existing lift station, L34, down near Coon Rapids Boulevard. So I'll talk about these in a bit more detail. Phase two, which would be the most upcoming, looking to 2025, 2026 construction, was originally constructed in 1965. There have been evaluations of this system by MCES, and it's been evaluated as a condition four, meaning poor. So on a scale of one to five, one being new, five being not. This segment of interceptor, which is, Met Council refers to it as interceptor number four NS 525. And it starts on the northwest side of Hanson Boulevard near Hanson Point Road, and then extends all the way through Lyons Park and Mallory Park down to the north side of Highway 10 near Exion Boulevard. So it's about 7,200 feet of 48-inch reinforced concrete pipe, RCP, and there are 26 existing maintenance access structures, or manholes, on this system. Phase three, Site One, continues from Phase two upstream, which would be to the northwest in this case, starting again near Hanson Point Boulevard and then working north through Partridge and 121st in that neighborhood. This existing, it's a combination of 42-inch and 48-inch RCP reinforced concrete pipe, and it was constructed between, in two different phases, 1965 and 1972. And again, this has been inspected and has been identified as being in poor condition. Phase three, Site Two, is further north. It's on the boundary between Coon Rapids and Andover, and it was built in 1972. It's about 400 feet that we are looking to rehabilitate, and it does include the meter station that monitors and meters the flow coming from Andover as it crosses the boundary into the city of Coon Rapids. As I said, it's about 400 feet, and it only includes two manhole structures on this one. It's up on Crooked Lake Boulevard, right around 133rd. So those are the locations that we're looking at. But why? So the photos that you're seeing here are examples of the condition of this infrastructure, of this gravity sanitary sewer interceptor. The photos that you're seeing on the left and on the right are actually pictures from the inside of the pipe. So you can see the flow, that's the water line in there, and you can see the pipe is becoming deteriorated. The photo on the far right side, you can actually see that the reinforcement that helps bring strength to the pipe itself, that reinforcement is starting to show, and it's starting to corrode. So it's lessening and it's strength. So that is one of the reasons why we want to do rehabilitation on this system. The photo in the middle is a picture from one of the manholes, and you can see all those white marks on there indicates mineral staining, and that's from water, groundwater, seeping in through the joints and leaving stains on the walls of the structures. So this is an aging system. We're seeing deterioration, and also, this system is through some pretty critical locations for the city in terms of important utilized parks. So they're very sensitive, and we want to keep that in mind as we go forward with this work. One of the things that we consider when we are evaluating the system is what it has to convey or flow through today, and what it needs to be able to convey in the future, because that limits us as to what is an appropriate rehabilitation system and methodology. So there's a bunch of data here, but the important thing I want to point out is that Phase three, Site two, being our most upstream, that has the lowest of the three, the lowest peak flows, but we're looking somewhere around 4.8 million gallons per day that flow through the system. By the time we get to the downstream end of this, near Exion and Highway 10, we're looking at almost 11 million gallons a day that flow through this pipe. So it's very important that we maintain the system and the integrity of its function. We looked at several different methods for rehabilitating this pipe, and part of the process is also to look at doing nothing. What would happen if nothing happened to this pipe? So we did evaluate that. We also looked at a couple of methods for renewing the system, and that includes CIPP lining, which stands for cured-in-place pipelining. I'll talk about that a bit more. Slip lining as well, which the best way I can explain that is you're taking a new pipe and slipping it into the old one. And then we also evaluated a full replacement, an open cut replacement, and what that would look like in terms of impacts to the city. So several different factors were included in the alternatives evaluation, and we wanted to understand which alternative was selected, what the environmental impacts to the community would be. There are wetlands, there are parks. Coon Creek is critical through this area. The interceptor actually follows a very similar alignment to the creek itself. Looking at the community impacts, what trails might be closed, what roadway closures might be required to complete this work. And then also permitting, that's crucial, that we comply with all the requirements of the local agencies, whether that be with the Minnesota Department of Transportation and access near Highway 10, or whether that be working with the city and getting the appropriate permits for the work. Property acquisition, which in this case would be temporary, is also evaluated because the contractor needs to find a way to access the system and able to perform the work. The capacity of the pipe, like we just talked about with those flow conditions, we need to make sure that the system can handle future flows as well as today's flows. Constructibility too, and I like to think about this, the complexity. How difficult will it be to perform this work, whether it's less difficult or more difficult? And then also, of course, construction cost was evaluated as well. Based on those different categories, we came to the conclusion that CIPP lining would be the recommended alternative in this facility plan. So CIPP, cured-in-place lining, and then there's also its partner, which is CIPMH, which stands for cured-in-place manhole. And the best way that I describe this, it's as if you were doing laundry and a sock got flipped inside out. So you have a manhole, and you're going to access that and flip your liner down into it. It uses the weight of water to help push that into place, and then that liner expands and presses against the edges of the existing host pipe and is cured using hot water because that liner is soaked with a resin. So think of it like a cast, but it's on the inside of the pipe. So once it cures and that's complete, it's structurally independent and it can act as its own pipe. The materials used are also less affected by corrosion that's often caused by the wastewater stream, so it has a longer life, and is considered a trenchless method. I do want to caution you when I say it's trenchless, sometimes there is excavation that's required, but it's much minimized because we're able to access from those different manhole points instead of digging up the whole thing all the way like we're often used to seeing. One caveat to the cured-in-place pipelining is that any of the existing flow, any of the existing sewage in the pipe, has to be removed in order to safely perform the work, and that process and that piping system, we call temporary conveyance. So I don't know if you recognize, but the photo on the right here is actually at the dead end of Exion Boulevard on the north side of Highway 10 with the work that was completed last, it would have been the fall of '23. So temporary conveyance, as I mentioned, is used to remove the flow from the inside of the sewer. It keeps it contained within a piping system and moves it up and around so the contractor can perform all of their work. But the impact to the city is that you see these large, black HDPE, high-density polyethylene pipes laying on the ground. So you can see in the photo on the left is an example of a pumping location, where the contractor will have large pumps set up. They often use sound attenuation to help minimize the impacts to the neighbors immediately around there. And then you see the piping system. So those two black lines that you see right down the middle of the photo on the right are the two pipes. So the contractor is required to have a redundant or dual system so that there is protection in case of any kind of emergency. We have evaluated for Phase two, because that's the most upcoming project to be evaluated, a potential route for the a potential route for the temporary conveyance, which you can see in the image here on the right, utilizing the trail system, utilizing existing right-of-way along both Eagle and Highway ten, to help minimize impacts to the neighborhood. Phase three, which won't be constructed until twenty twenty-nine, twenty-thirty, will get evaluated in design at that point in time. Coordination is also key to having a successful project, and we evaluate the necessary coordination as part of our facility planning. Everything from permits, whether that be from Coon Creek Watershed District, the Army Corps of Engineers related to their jurisdiction over Coon Creek, Minnesota DOT, as well as the city. So coordinating with all of those local agencies is really key to making sure that the project is successful, and understanding what information we need to be sharing as we move through this process. Utilities as well. We coordinate and communicate with private utility agencies as well as public, so City of Coon Rapids with your water and storm sewer systems, as well as your municipal sanitary sewer system that might connect into this interceptor. So we communicate. Mark had the luxury of introducing us, and he is part of our team. So we work along with him to make sure that the impacts are minor to the community. And then as well, our environmental evaluation is a really big part of this facility plan. Looking at and understanding what environmental elements are in the area, whether that be a wetland, Coon Creek is, you know, crucial to this area. Also looking at an archaeological review to understand, are we going to impact anything of archaeological value in the area? Part of the facility plan also includes what's known as an EIW, or environmental information worksheet. That includes everything from where a well might be, to where a underground tank may have been at one point in time, so that we understand if we encounter anything like that, how to navigate and mitigate any of those impacts. And a very important part of it too is understanding any threatened or endangered species. We do have some in the area, the Blandings turtle. It's local, so we provide information to the contractor about what happens if you encounter one, how do you protect it? We did not, however, find any endangered plant species, because that's something we look for as well through part of this process. So I get to turn it over to Tim, and he can talk to you about the financing of a project of this scale.
Thank you, Rachel. Council members, my name is Tim Widdeen. I am Assistant Manager with Interceptor Engineering at Metropolitan Council Environmental Services. Talked to you a little bit about the financing of our project, as well as this project schedule. So part of the reason that we do a facility plan is it's a requirement for funding through the Public Facilities Authority. The money will come as a form of a loan, a low-interest loan, through the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority. Below-market rate loans, used to finance eligible projects, which really helps us keep our wastewater rates low. We continue to pay those loan fees or those loan costs through our municipal rates that we work with you on. There are, as we've said before, there are no assessments to the residents as a part of this work. Get the right button. As far as the total costs and how those are going to impact the rates, again, we're looking at a twenty-year term through the PFA, the Public Facilities Authorities. Loans for these projects are paid for from two funding sources. One is the municipal waste charge, which is the Metropolitan Council Environmental Services portion of the city's or the resident's sewer bill. The other portion that pays for these costs are the sewer availability charge, or the SAC. This is a one-time charge that new connections pay when they connect onto the system. Might be a new home, a new business, something along those lines, similar to how the city works, where you have your SAC fee that you charge for a new, new connection. Our SAC fee is a part of that SAC fee that you, that you issue. We're looking at impact on, on rates from eighteen-point-four-three-million-dollar loan of about fifty-five cents. It's annual amount that's included in the annual sewer billing per household, and right now that averages about a two-hundred-and-forty-two-dollar wholesale rate charged to communities. It's about twenty-four dollars paid per year for twenty years from the SAC fund per new household connection or, or relative equivalent. So that's where all of our funding comes from, to pay for this improvement. As far as our schedule, we've been working on this for quite some time. We had a public information meeting on this project back October fourteenth of this year. Pleased to have a couple of people that, that were able to show up and talk to us about the project. Our next steps, let me make sure I'm looking at my right comments here. So part of that was publishing a legal notice in the, of, of the public hearing in the Star Tribune newspaper, which was published on October thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four. We mailed the public hearing notice on November fourth to property owners in the proposed project area, as well as numerous government and community stakeholders. We sent email invitations on November twelfth. We're holding our public hearing tonight, November nineteenth. Next steps will include a review by the Metropolitan Council, an adoption of the facility plan, which is scheduled for January of twenty-twenty-four. And then in March of twenty-twenty-four, we will submit the plan, the facility plan, to the Minnesota Public, Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, which will include our application to be included on a priority funding list. This funding will be in the form of low-interest loans that Metropolitan Council Environmental Services will pay off over a twenty-year period. With that, I will turn the podium back over to Councilmember Lindstrom, who will talk about our next steps.
Great, thank you, Tim. Thank you, Rachel. So if you're out there and you're thinking, gosh, I'd like to learn more about this, there are ways to do that. We have this plan at the Anoka County Library, we have it right here at City Hall, and you can check it out on our website as well. It's going to be open, accepting comments up until the end of the day on December first. There's lots of different ways to submit your questions. If it's okay with you, Mayor, we'll open it up if there's any questions from the audience. I don't think we've had anybody sign up. Nobody signed up yet, but now would be your time.
Hang on, Peter. Let me just, let me yield, let me take control of this meeting back again.
Yes, indeed.
Is there any questions of council for Peter or anybody there? Before we, before we open the public hearing? Go ahead.
I guess I do have a question that I would ask this at the public hearing or, or now. But this, the next phase, phase three, that would happen in twenty twenty-nine, twenty-thirty, you mentioned phase three, site one of that goes along a hundred and twenty-first, and it looks like it's going to parallel or be right under our brand-new trail that runs through that wetland. Can you tell me how that's going to impact that trail, what that would, if, if there's more expense to the city and how it's going to impact our trail users?
That's probably a question for Mr. Hammer, because I, I think this actually starts, I don't think this goes as far as our new trail, does it? Mr. Hanson?
Phase three does.
Mayor and, and Councilmember Guskowiak, indeed, a, a part of our proposed trail that we will be building next year goes over the Met Council interceptor line from Partridge Street over to a hundred and twenty-first slash Shenandoah Boulevard. So we have been working with the Met Council team to make them aware of that, and we're also working to, to make sure that they, that, that we have all of the items in place necessary to have our trail there and be accepted by the Met Council as well, because they do have an easement there. As we get through the design plans and the design process, we'll be working through all the details to make sure they protect the trail to the maximum extent possible. And if there's portions that have to be repaved, that'll just be part of the project. That's typically part of the project, part of the restoration process.
The, the intent of any project is that it's returned in kind. So the condition that it's in before we're there, want to make sure that it's that or better when we leave.
Okay, well, that's great, because it's like brand-spanking-new. That's not even there yet. Thank you, I, I apologize. When I looked at it, I thought it looked like it ended before the trails. Councilmember Carlson?
The cured-in-place pipelining, is that what was used last year?
Correct.
The other project?
Yes.
Same type of lining that was successful?
Yes, it was a very successful project. It went very smoothly. We were able to get all of that system lined from the north side of Highway ten at Exion, all the way downstream to Met Council's existing L thirty-four off of, down off of East Drive Road and.
Coon Rapids Boulevard extension.
Yes, the extension. Thank you.
Is the life expectancy on that about the same as replacement, or is it?
The life expectancy of cured-in-place pipelining is a minimum of fifty years, which is longer than a lot of materials that are available to date. It is a structurally sound material once it's cured. So even if the existing RCP, that reinforced concrete pipe that it's inside of, even if that pipe deteriorates, the lining inside is structurally independent and will last longer than that.
And there'll be no trenching unless something comes up?
No, no trenching in terms of the replacement of the interceptor. I don't know if you recall this on the phase one work that was completed, but any time that the temporary conveyance crosses a trail or roadway, bear, we, the intent is that the contractor buries the pipe, so that the road is smooth for anyone that needs to cross. It would be a temporary closure, but short-term. That way, the roadways and trails would be useful after that pipe is installed, and then it gets removed at the end of the project, and the roadway or the trail is patched and repaired.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Novak? You may have just answered my question, but yeah. It appeared that phase two was actually crossing Hanson Boulevard, and I was just going to ask at that point, would there be a burial of that conveyance?
Actually, we have a really wonderful way of crossing Hanson Boulevard. So Coon Creek crosses underneath Hanson Boulevard directly south, and there is a very nice bridge, well, it's, it's a bridge and a culvert there. So we will work with Coon Creek in order to utilize that crossing that's already there and minimize any impact to Hanson Boulevard, since that's such a busy thoroughfare.
Excellent.
Yes, you're welcome.
Councilmember Ray Rower? All I want to do is say thank you. This presentation was very thorough, very clear, easy to understand, so I just appreciate the work that you put into, into this, all of you.
Yeah, thank you. We have a really great team.
Mr. Hanson, do you recall when we did this last time? I'm trying to remember, is this, is this the project where we had some neighbors complaining about smells?
Mayor and council, yes.
Let's see, how can I put this delicately? Yes.
Yes, the portion that we did from north of Highway ten through Earlenson Park and down to the station L thirty-four, there was a, a city segment just out the City Hall here, where we did receive some, some complaints, and then over the course of the project too, which actually, the latter is relatively common with lining, because it does create smells, and as long as people are using all of the services in their house, including the services in the basement that may be very rarely used, and so that those traps stay filled, it's, it's not a problem.
Okay, okay.
Mark, do you mind if I add to that?
Absolutely.
When construction gets closer, there will be public meetings held related to where the work will occur, so that the neighborhoods directly impacted can attend. And one of the pieces of information that is shared is how to minimize any of the odors that might be incurred in someone's home. And it's a really simple, go take two or three cups of water and pour them into your drain to make sure that they're not dry, that water helps to prevent any of the gases coming up into the building itself. So that is something that we talk about and share with the impacted neighborhood when it's much closer to construction.
That's a really important reminder for everyone, anyway. We don't want those gases in the house. All right, and this, the cure and pipe, that, is that what we did with all of our other sewers, lines in town?
Yeah, indeed, Mayor and Council, that is what we have been working on ourselves, on our own forty-eight inch and thirty-six inch lines coming out of L thirty-four as well, where our system connects generally into their interceptor, then goes into the lift station, all the way under Coon Creek, through the Port Riverwalk Development, down Ninety-Ninth, and then up Hanson Boulevard. Yes, same, same exact process.
All right, any other questions from council of the team or anybody?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Guskowiak?
We have one more, and that's regarding the cost and, and the rate impacts. You've mentioned that there is no cost or impact to residents, but let me just point out that we've got some mandates in the City of Coon Rapids from the watershed and from the state, so our storm rates are being impacted a little bit in future years. So have all of these costs for this project kind of been baked into the fees that the Met Council's been charging through the sewer fee all along to say that, has it been accrued for? Or will there be incremental rate increases to our residents to cover this? Long question maybe.
Certainly, thank you, Councilmember and, and Mr. Mayor. I'll go back to our rate information here. One of the things that, that I'll point out is, is we're looking at about a fifty-five cent increase or fifty-five percent, or fifty-five cent cost that'll be coming out of that, the two-hundred-and-forty-two annual, annual average cost for environmental services fees for the wholesale rate that's charged to communities. I'm trying to remember exactly how that gets rolled in. That's usually, usually as we go through and work with communities and talk about what the rates are going to be, we will really look at what our rates are for the operation and maintenance and capital improvements program for the facility itself. Part of that is evaluating, looking at loan repayments for this loan and other loans that we have. I would, I would expect that, yes, the fifty-five cents is, is probably going to be something that we'll see as we move forward for this eighteen-million-dollar. But that's, you know, not, not only the residents of, of Coon Rapids, but it's the broader region as well that will see that, that change.
Okay, so the broader reading, upstream and downstream?
Correct. Yep, I, I live in the, the east metro, I'll pay this as well.
Okay.
All right, any other questions of council for this team? Hearing none, let's open the public hearing. Is anybody here from the public to ask questions about this? Anybody here from the public to ask questions about the interceptor rehabilitation project? All right, one more time, anybody here? All right, we'll close the public hearing, and that's all we had to do tonight on that, was right? Listen to their presentation, very nice, thank you very much, and then hold a public hearing, and we've done that. So, anything, are we done? Are we all good? Thank you very much for being here. Thank you. And Peter, what was that address again for the? Oh, I'm kidding. All right, thank you so much. All right. We are up to item eight. Consider a feasibility report and order public hearing and assessment hearing for street reconstruction, project twenty-five dash one. And I think we've got the Mark Hanson Show tonight.
Mayor and council, I'm here to talk about twenty twenty-five street reconstruction already. So we have developed the feasibility report, we're here to present the details of that here tonight, answer any questions about next year's street reconstruction program. Just a little bit of background, as always, the streets that we are proposing have been raided by our engineering staff, and our public work staff is either in deficient or in poor condition, and we very routinely talk together and coordinate the streets that we want to fix for the following year or recommend to fix. or recommend to fix. A lot of it based on where our public works crews are spending the most time making repairs. So that brings us here tonight in our proposed program. One of the first neighborhoods that we are proposing is what we would refer to as the Oaks of Shenandoah North. This is bounded by Coon Creek Boulevard to the west, Shenandoah Boulevard to the east, 133rd to the north, and then it's north of 131st. So it's that neighborhood that's just right on the edge of Andover. And the proposal here is to replace the roads, all of the damaged curb and gutter. Driveway aprons go along with that, repair any storm, sanitary manholes, and then also the, the plugged hydrants. These are the hydrants that the bottoms exist within the groundwater table, the natural groundwater table. So they need to be plugged in order for that. It's like an irrigation system. You have to pump it out. And, and that's where we have historically always had the most mechanical issues and repair issues with our hydrant system, as well as the valves that exist nearby those. So we're proposing to replace those as part of this project. And then also upgrade all of the street lighting to LED lights. The other neighborhood is the Thousand Oaks neighborhood. This neighborhood is south of Main Street and west of Olive Street. This, this group of streets, for the most part, began life as a set of private streets. So it's a very different neighborhood. If you drive it, you'll see very short or narrow front setbacks, a very narrow right-of-way. But they are now public streets. We, we plow them, we maintain them, and it's time. We've been looking at these streets for a number of years, trying to figure out when it's best just to get in there and do it all at once. So we are recommending, next year is the year, to do that. And what we would recommend here is replacement of the street pavements entirely, replacing all of the damaged curb and gutter, driveway aprons, repairing the storm sewer systems, manholes and any pipes that need to be repaired, and then the sanitary manholes. This neighborhood has some stretches of cast iron water main pipe that we have historically had some issues with, so we would recommend replacing that with new water main pipe as well, as well as any other hydrants that are plugged or valves that exist within the groundwater table, and then upgrading all of the LED or all of the existing city lights to LED. The last area is the Thrush Park area. These are streets that we've been in this neighborhood reconstructing streets a couple of different times over the last 10 years. Last time we were in this neighborhood was 2018. This proposal would finish off all of the remaining streets that are generally south of Main Street, west, and then a little bit, there's a couple cul-de-sacs east of Shenandoah Boulevard, north of 121st, but kind of generally around the Thrush Park neighborhood. Coincidentally, very close to where the new trail is being built, the new Coon Creek Trail. So very similar to what we've done in the past in these neighborhoods. We're talking about replacing the streets, the curb and gutter, driveway aprons, repairing storm and sanitary manholes, and then all of the plugged hydrants and valves, and then lastly, upgrading the street lights to LED poles, or fixtures rather, and then the poles as needed. The project schedule we would propose is January 2025. We would like to hold a second open house for the public. We had one on October 1st. Went very well. We had a lot of people attend. Were able to answer a lot of questions. There was a lot of interest in the neighborhood. Really appreciate that. And then on February 18th, we would propose to hold the public hearing and assessment hearing. In April and May, the contracts will go out for bidding. We will get bids, get everything set up such that the council would be able to award the contracts at that time, and then ultimately adopt the assessments at the first council meeting in May. Prior to that, or around that time, we will also hold a neighborhood meeting in one of the nearby parks to answer questions. The biggest question we get is, is schedule on, on these projects. People want to know exactly when we're going to be in front of their house or when we're going to be in a certain area of the neighborhood doing work. We don't have all of that information right now because we leave it to the contractor to decide their best schedule. That gives the best prices, contract prices to the city when we allow them to innovate on their side and determine their most efficient schedule. So we'll have schedules at that point. We can go through all those details with the property owners. And then the construction would last through the summer. Generally, I tell people it's going to go from May to October, but within your neighborhood, it's going to be more like six to eight weeks. We have numerous letters that will continue to go out answering frequently asked questions. We do put out weekly notices every Friday that gives a, a one-week look ahead, very general, very broad, the general things that people can expect to see on their street the coming week. And then this year, we introduced a new option where people can actually sign up to get text messages. We don't do too many. We kind of leave those to emergency situations, like we were trying to turn off a water main here, and then this one broke, and then now all of a sudden we have to turn another one off, and that kind of messed up our shutdown area. So we have instituted that with our process, just trying to get that word out as quickly as we can because sometimes it just takes a while, and sometimes, and emergencies do come up. It's a construction project. Things do happen like that. So we're trying the best we can to get the word out. Estimated project costs, the total cost is very high level, estimated at $8 million. That includes all of the construction administration, staff time, and survey work, construction materials testing. But that's going to be broken down into different funds. These estimates will get dialed down more precisely as the plans come together over the course of the winter. But just different city funds, like their street reconstruction fund, all the way to assessments, which are estimated about 1.2 million over the course of the project that would be used to fund the project. So the 2025 assessment rates will be proposed at, for a single-family residence. People always ask if it matters if it's a front foot or if they're a corner lot. It does not. In Coon Rapids, all single-family homes pay one rate. It's the same rate. Next year, it's going to be $2,430. Multi-families, townhouses, twin homes and things, structures like that do pay at a different rate per our policy. They pay at the front foot, as well as commercial properties and industrial properties. Multi-family properties are proposed at $32 a front foot. Commercial properties are twice that, essentially at $61 a foot, and then another 30% gets you to industrial properties. Latter two, we don't have any in 2025. Assessment payment options. So we recognize that these assessments come up, people, and it's not something that people plan for. It's like your car breaking down. It's unexpected, unwelcome, and we totally recognize and appreciate that. City does offer a number of different ways to be able to pay a street reconstruction assessment. They can be paid over 10 years. But the first option is if you don't want to pay any interest at all, because the assessments do carry an interest rate, a very low interest rate, you can pay between May 7th, so the day after, the council would presumably adopt the assessment on May 6th next year. 30 days past that up to June 7th, and no interest would be charged. Another option is to pay the assessment after June 8th. At that point, interest will start accruing. The property owner would need to contact our assessing department to determine that amount owed up until November 15th, and then after that, it's going to go over to the, the property taxes and be paid with the, the property tax statements starting in 2026. So if you are a single-family property homeowner, which most of them are in these neighborhoods, and you wanted to pay it off over that 10 years, it would equate to another $316 that you would see across two property tax invoices over the course of 10 years. So $316 a year. So, times 10 would get you the assessment plus the interest.
Mr. Hanson, the townhomes in Thousand Oaks that circle up, there's 77 townhomes.
Yes.
Do we know yet what they will be assessed?
Yes, I have that information. I don't have the assessment roll off the, here.
Okay, because that would be based on like a $32 a foot divided by 77 units, probably, right?
Yeah, actually, we, we just calculated over all of the multi-family townhome condos in that entire Thousand Oaks. So everybody that falls into that category is paying the same. We use the entire front footage of all of those streets, times the number of homes, divided by the multi-family rate. So everybody's paying one rate, and it's generally, it's a third of the single-family assessment cost, which has always been historically where those assessments have been at.
Thank you.
So we do have a couple of videos that are available on our city website that walk property owners through the process of street reconstruction. There's one that takes you through this process from start to finish, as well as one that answers frequently asked questions. And with that, I will answer any questions that the council has.
Thank you. All right. Council, any questions of Mr. Hanson?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
The project that you're calling the Shenandoah area, it looks like you're going to be doing some reconstruction of 132nd, right? And two years ago, we did 133rd. So how does, oh, excuse, 132nd, 131st?
So we did 131st between Coon Creek and Shenandoah in 2023. We also put a sidewalk on the north side of that road as part of that project. I should say that there's no sidewalks that are proposed on any of these groups of streets. We did look at where they may make sense as part of our checklist, as part of our process, but we determined that
Okay, yeah, that was, okay. That, that clarifies. Thanks for bringing this map back up. For some reason, the one that we had was smaller and fuzzy.
I apologize a little bit. The, the grayscale on the map is a little hard to read.
That's fine. Looks good. Other question I had for you is, so we're doing 3.9 miles. Does our, is our cost per mile, it seems higher than in past years. Is, is that?
Well, like I said, our assessments kind of right now come from a worst-case, high-level standpoint. And a lot of that, yeah, it's, it's about, it's still around a million dollars a mile to construct a street in Coon Rapids. But this project also proposes a significant, well, not a significant, but a length of water main to be replaced. So that's going to be another million and a half. And then various stormwater improvements. We're going to have to replace a number of stormwater catch basins, ones that were constructed originally out of blocks, or just have too much infill, infiltration in them falling apart. So sanitary manholes as well. So all that kind of goes into that overall. And then we just add some contingencies on top of that because we really just don't know exactly until we really get into the details, which is going to happen over the next couple of months.
Got it. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
Having watched the street reconstruction process for four years now, I just want to compliment you on the work you do, Mr. Hanson, with especially the communication to the residents. They really appreciate that, the, the quick notifications and the responses to their questions. Also, the long-term planning that's done to always keep, you know, the oldest sections being replaced and keeping costs down as much as possible. So with that, I will, I move to adopt Resolution Number 25-1 Sub 4, accepting the feasibility report and ordering a public hearing for February 18th, 2025. Adopt Resolution Number 25-1 Sub 10, declaring the cost to be assessed and ordering the preparation of a proposed assessment roll. And adopt Resolution Number 25-1 Sub 11, setting an assessment hearing date for February 18th, 2025.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Geisler. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you, Mark. Item nine is to consider Resolution 24-99 for 2024-2 appealed assessment levy. Ms. Hanson.
We had three contested miscellaneous assessments that were heard by the Board of Adjustment and Appeal at their meeting on November 7th. Their recommendations are outlined in the agenda memo, and so the council is now asked to affirm those recommendations by adopting the resolution before you.
What is, what is that, that, that first one? I, I understand affirming the 340 on the second one and reducing the 340. But that first one, it says remove zero. Are we, so we're not changing that at all?
Don't believe so.
We removed all citations.
We removed all the citations.
Oh, yeah, we're removing all citations.
Oh, okay. Very good.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolutions 24-99, adopting the 2024 Sub 2 miscellaneous special assessments, contested miscellaneous assessments one year. Make that a motion.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson. Is there discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And I would just really like to thank the Board of Adjustment Appeals and everybody that's involved in this because this is, it, it just took us about a minute, and they probably spent the better part of an evening on this. So we just thank you for all of your work on this. And, yeah, and all the staffs, the code enforcement, everything that gets to this point. So there's a lot of, a lot in that. Item 10 is to consider Resolution 24-100, approving a budget amendment to complete a traffic study on a segment of Northdale Boulevard. Mr. Hanson.
Yes, mayor and council, this proposal is for a traffic study on Northdale Boulevard between Main Street and Crooked Lake Boulevard. That traffic study is expected to collect and analyze traffic data along that entire corridor and then investigate options to address vehicle and pedestrian safety concerns. We did not have this item included in our 2024 budget, so we are proposing to take half of the funds from the Riverdale Fund, and then the rest, we do have covered in our available 2024 budget. So that is the, the proposal.
Very good. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Hanson on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Is that amount, is that the amount of $11,250? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes. That's the 50%.
That's the 50.
That's the budget amendment.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 24-100, amending the 2024 Riverdale Area Fund for a traffic study on Northdale Boulevard between Main Street and Crooked Lake Boulevard.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Novak. Is there further discussion on this? And just so everybody knows, we did spend a lot of time talking about this at a workshop just prior to the meeting, so. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 11 is to consider a 2024, 2025 insurance renewals and Resolution 24-102, establishing limited cleanup and property damage protection for sewer backups. Is there any change on that? The, the way it's described, it almost sounds like it's a bit of a change, but it's the same, same policy, right?
It's, mayor, council, same policy. We just have to opt into it every year if we want it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Is this the Ron Manning plan? Is that what we're talking about again today?
Yes, it is.
I think it is.
Yeah, yeah, we, I think we, we did without that optional coverage for like one or two years and had, things kind of hit the fan, and we felt terrible that we weren't able to help residents that had sewer backups in their basement, and so we've been, as, as Ron recommended it that year, we've been paying for it ever since. But I think it's, I think it's serving our community well.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion to authorize the following: purchasing insurance renewal through the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, LMCIT, maintain statutory legal limits of 1.5 million per occurrence, and authorize resolution 24-102, purchasing sewer backup liability insurance.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Armstrong. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. Item 12 is to consider approval of a contract with Axon Enterprise Incorporated. Chief Steiner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. As some of you may remember, in 2021, the department got our first body worn camera system. At the time, it was an add-on to an existing in-car squad system that we had since 2018. Since that time, that hardware has become obsolete, unsupported, and it's nearing the end of its useful life. The current provider, and industry-wide, has gone to a subscription-based model where you lease the technology now. So as we have to make that decision as to whether to enter into a new lease with our current provider, our analysis is that it's not desirable for us. We've had some backend and technical issues that have made working with some of our law enforcement partners in the county and our, in the criminal justice system, difficult. And so, we've also become a little bit of an outlier in the county, as the other agencies have all migrated gradually towards the Axon system, it works well for them. So, in addition to the body worn camera system, Axon offers a required solution that we need for our interview and surveillance, I'm sorry, interview room and surveillance room in our detention area. They offer unlimited data storage and the service of migrating all the existing digital evidence into their system. They're also the parent company of TASER, which is a less lethal defense tool that all the Coon Rapids police officers are trained to carry and do carry. Our current TASERS are a few models old, they're in desperate need of replacement, and TASER and Axon has also moved to a lease-subscription model, and they don't offer them for sale as well. So the current proposal also includes leasing TASERS on the same schedule as the in-car system. And as we've discussed, if you remember in the August 14 session, the total cost of that system is $1,427,000, $1,427,113.50 over five years, with that first installment of $285,422.70 in 2025, which is included in the 2025 proposed budget. The reason we're coming to council and asking to enter into that agreement a little early is because it allows us to be put on the implementation schedule with Axon prior to summer of 2025, and as you can imagine, summer is a complicated time with vacations and whatnot to roll things out, so getting on that schedule early is advantageous for us. So it is our recommendation that the city council authorize entering into the five-year contract with Axon Enterprises Incorporated for the body worn camera system, in-car video system, TASERS, and interview and detention area security camera system, unlimited data storage for digital evidence, and all associated implementation costs.
And this is the technology that will put us back in the good graces of the Anoka County Attorney's Office?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Novak?
No other reason than that alone, I'm going to move to authorize entering into a five-year contract with Axon Enterprises Incorporated for a BWC system, in-car video system, TASERS, and interview and detention area security camera system, unlimited data storage for digital evidence, and associated implementation costs.
Second.
Motion by Novak and a second by Ray Rauer. Further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ray Rauer, and then Councilmember Guskowjak.
Chief, I remember when we approved the purchasing of the body worn camera systems, I think that this is, this is great to have, it protects both our officers and our residents. The thing is, is we have to have the hardware in the system to make it work for you, to make it work with Anoka County, so very glad to see this come through and happy to support it.
Councilmember Guskowjak?
Yeah, and just to build on that, I mean, it seems like it was just yesterday that Councilmember Brad Johnson was sitting over there, and, you know, now he's county attorney and he was always saying, we need to, whenever we make investments, we want to be on a program that's countywide. So that's what this does, so this makes sense for all of us. I did have a question, and I'm pretty sure it shows it in here, but the subscription base is for the equipment, the technology and using it, it is also, do they manage all of that recorded data and store it, you know, confidentially, and that's all part of the program, or do we have people in our office then that are going to need to be trained and to use this? Do you know what I mean?
Councilmember Guskowjak, a little bit of both. We do have an employee that manages our body worn camera system, it's a full-time job, you know, fulfilling discovery requests and redactions, and it keeps him very busy, but it is also supported technically by Axon, it is cloud-based evidence storage. It offers a, just a ton of advantages to us right now as we're getting it, and as technology changes, we're going to get upgrades and the most current equipment, and, you know, that's part of the subscription model, is we're always going to be, you know, with the most modern version, and so, there's a lot of advantages to it. Subscriptions are sort of industry-wide and technology, the whole technology sector now, we're running into that, it's just sort of the way of the future, I think, has its advantages, definitely.
And Mr. Mayor, just a little bit more on that, I know that we talked about this in work session, and we talked about it a while ago, actually, and then again in August, so I'm glad we're moving this, and I knew we were moving this, and it is in the 2025 proposed budget, and it's going to be in the budget for the next, you know, several years, because it's a yearly subscription base. So, we don't need to make a budget adjustment, we are just allowing you to get it ordered, and then it's going to be paid in 2025, that's what we're doing tonight?
Mr. Stenwell?
Mayor, Council, that's correct, you know, and actually, in just a couple of weeks, we'll be asking you to consider the 2025 budget, so it seems like that timeline's pretty close, however, given the nature of getting in line to get the system, we thought it was worthwhile bringing it to you a little bit early. All this is really doing is obligating you through the contract to fulfill that, that amount, you know, it's a part of the budget, and so we don't anticipate any issues, but if in the next two weeks, you decide that something needs to be removed from the budget, it just can't be this, find something else, we're locked in if council approves this tonight.
Got it, thank you.
Chief Steiner, these upgraded TASERS, will you require Councilmember Carlson to come back and take one for the team?
Mr. Mayor, I don't think I'd have to require him to do it, he likes that sort of thing. He's probably going to volunteer.
Mr. Mayor, I was much younger then.
All right, do we have any other discussion on this? Do we have a, we don't have a, we don't have a motion on this yet.
Yes, we do.
We do, we have a motion in a second? How come I forgot to write it down? Dang it. All right, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries, that's right, that was a Ray Rauer, Novak thing, wasn't it? That's right, all right. Okay, we are up to the open mic public comment portion of the meeting, is anybody here to address council for open mic this evening? Anybody here to address us for open mic? No, all right. I don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are to other business.
Well, Mr. Mayor, we got to talk about all the fun things coming up, right? So, today's Tuesday, on Thursday of this week, we have our senior bazaar, that's going to be held at the Civic Center, and that's from 9:00 AM to 3:00, and so that's a great event, you know, run by our, the senior group, and it's one of their fundraising activities, so if you have time, please stop by and check it out. And then on Sunday, this coming Sunday, is, kicks off our season of giving, and the Toys for Joy skate will be at the Coon Rapids Ice Center from 5:30 to 7:30, so that is on Sunday. And then the next thing is a reminder that people most probably know, but next week, not this Thursday, the following Thursday, is Thanksgiving, and then, so Thanksgiving on the 28th, and the Friday after on the 29th, our city offices will be closed. So if you need anything from city staff, please check with them by Wednesday, the 27th, or you're going to need to wait till December.
All right.
Those are the update.
Very good. We have a council meeting before it, but just so you can get it in your calendars, the annual tree lighting will be December 14th, and then immediately the next day at the same ice center will be the winter classic charity hockey game, 30 annual Operation Healing Heroes Fighting for Freedom fundraiser, it's a great hockey game on the 15th. Councilmember Carlson?
Kudos to the Coon Rapids Fire Department and the Coon Rapids Community Fund for their fundraiser on Saturday at the Activity Center, Bunker Hills Activity Center, raising money for the Patrick Shunover Fund and the Play for Patrick. May 17, the Play for Patrick, Patrick Shunover Fund will be putting on an event at the Coon Rapids High School, screening up to 300 young people for possible heart defects. Most of your annual physicals for kids miss things like that, because they're young, they're not looking for that. You'd be amazed at the percentage of kids that they find heart defects in when they do this, talking like a full-scale screen with cardiologists there, EKGs, everything, it's just amazing. They've already saved lives, it's a wonderful event, a great fundraiser, and kudos to the fire department and all the wonderful volunteers that were there.
It looked amazing, I was out of town for meetings, and I was really sad to miss it. It looked amazing. All right, and to be, it was Bunker Hills Event Center.
Event Center, oops, sorry. Not the one in Andover.
Right. All right, and then as a reminder, we're thrilled to have the Seasons Dinner Theater back in Coon Rapids, back at the Bunker Hills Event Center, partnering with Kendall's Tavern and Chop House, and they are back with their Old Crud, It's Christmas. Those shows are between December 5th and December 31st, and you can get your tickets online, it's a fun thing. Any other business to come before council this evening?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson, that's to adjourn, and wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving coming up. We are adjourned.